Two dash four dash zero twenty five. Um parcel forty nine provides optometric and ophthalmic eye care services. The new facility on TMK two four twenty five forty seven will offer optical aesthetic laser and other health and wellness services. Um, and the two parcels will be consolidated to create a single one point six nine acre property. The hours of operation will be Monday through Saturday, eight AM to five PM. Traffic to the site will be staggered based on scheduled appointments with patients. And the construction of the facility is anticipated to start in later twenty twenty six. With occupancy within twelve to eighteen months following that. On the county zoning map, you can see the subject properties um outlined in red. The map shows that the zoning for this property is RM one and RS seven point five. With um various residential districts in the area. The land use pattern allocation guide identifies this property as MDU or medium density urban. And the state land use district for this area is urban. In the aerial photo, you can see that the site is located at the corner of Capilani Street and Hualali Street, just Malka of Hilo Police Station. You can see the existing facility and parking. And on parcel forty seven, you see the one-story, single-family dwelling that um is proposed to be demolished. Um, the applicant's site plan. Um, it shows existing facility and parking stalls for the exist um the parcel on the left. And the new facility on the bottom right corner of the site plan. Um, the red line that I'm showing is the existing or the current property line between the two properties. And the orange, yellow line um is approximate location of the road widening um easement of ten feet. And that's where the um yard setback will be measured from. The applicant has provided the proposed floor plan before you. The first floor consists of a reception area, office, restrooms, a treatment studio, and multiple treatment rooms with a yoga studio upstairs. The proposed elevations of the project show a maximum height of not to exceed twenty five feet. And the site photo is taken from the intersection showing Hualali um and Capilani Streets with the subject property in the middle and the police station to the right of the image. Here are the street views of Capilani. Um, street looking northern- northerly on the left and southern view on the right. Here are the western views on the left, eastern view on the right of Hualali Street. And the director's recommendation is approval with conditions. And with that, I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you for that presentation. Will the applicant and will the representatives please go forward?
Good morning. Sorry about that.
Good morning. Um, okay, I'm gonna swear you guys in. Uh, please raise your right hand. Uh, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Winter Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, please speak directly and clearly into your microphone. State your name in the town that you reside in and whom you represent.
Okay, good morning. I'm Chairman of the Commission. My name is Sidney Fuque. I'm here assisting the applicant. Um, I live in Hilo. Um, to my right is Dr. Mikiala Souza Driscoll. She's the applicant. Um, I believe she also resides in Hilo.
Okay. Um, have you received the background and recommendation reports from the planning department?
Uh, yes, uh, we've had a chance to review the staff's background report, the recommendation. Um, and we found them to be acceptable. There's some, a few um minor kind of amendments to the conditions we'd like to propose. Um, and I don't know whether you want us to do that now or subsequent to any presentation we might have.
Okay, um, yeah, I think uh at this point in time, we can
Okay.
Take your testimony.
Um, thank you. Like, um, I was going through my notes and, you know, ironically, ten years ago. Um, I worked with Dr. Souza, um, Driscoll and her uh husband and secured their uh use permit for the property. Previous to that, their um facility was located in a rental facility along, just across Hilo Hu Kila. And then they decided to secure a use permit, so um. And kind of ironically, I was just telling Dr. Souza, uh, Driscoll that um my notes was she was just, uh, she just gave birth to her daughter. And so it's ten years, uh, almost like to the day that um we're here before this commission. Um, trying to secure an expansion uh for the facility. So they've been in operation since twenty twenty, um, so it's been five years. And so they found that um they'd like to expand and um their facility by providing a little bit more wellness-oriented type of use. And so there is this vacant property adjacent to theirs um to their facility. They purchased that with the idea of having um it become part and parcel, you know, of the operation. So um, you know, your favorable recommendation as uh recommended by the director is appreciated. Um, the conditions that we're kind of suggesting that be amended are are three. Um, one was condition three. Um, that condition requires that the applicant install a reduced pressure type backflow preventer. Well, that's already been done. And the idea is uh for this project to be integrated into one and to utilize the same meter, so. Um, we would like to propose that if required, the, you know, just insertion of if required by the Department of Water Supply. You know, the reduced um backflow preventer shall be provided because it's already there. And we would hate to have the condition just listed as is and staff reviews it and say like, oh, you got to put in another backflow preventer. So we we just kind of wanted to make sure if the water department requires uh it to be upgraded or a new one installed, well, sure, you know, so it it should be. So we're suggesting that that condition be amended by just inclusion, uh, just including it. Including the term if required by the Department of Water Supply. On condition number ten, similarly, the sewer system is already collected. And everything what they're gonna do is all kind of integrated into one system. So we can't see the need to have is another study required just for the purposes. So again, if the DEM, the Department of Environmental Management uh wants to have a study just to have this kind of integrated system, then it should be done. But uh again, we don't want it to be mandated. And so likewise, we're suggesting in condition two, you know, just add that caveat. Like if required, a sewer study shall be done. Um, the last condition is like condition number five. We'd like to just kind of like replace it um by stating that uh, you know, currently right now, as as written, it's saying that, you know, before they can apply for plan approval. The consolidation action has to occur. And so we don't know how long that's gonna take. So we're just saying that if they submit a consolidation application, then it's gonna go through. So don't hold up the plan review. And so we would like to uh recommend that that uh condition be replaced with this new condition, which I believe the staff had kind of passed out. And which reads that an application for the consolidation and or re-subdivision of parcels forty seven and forty nine shall be submitted prior to submitting plans for plan approval with its approval prior to issuance of a building permit. So it doesn't stop the process. Um, and with those suggested uh amendments, the applicant is totally receptive to the staff's recommendation and with these conditions as amended.
Okay, thank you. Uh, would you like to make a statement? Okay, okay, very well. Um, Commissioners, you have any questions uh for the applicant or for the planning department staff?
A quick question. So the part of the consolidation, I'm assuming that they'll be using the parking from the existing structure.
That's correct.
So um really, we're just focused on just the current new structure.
Correct.
What was the setback from the road? Was that?
Yeah, so it it's kind of, yeah, I'm glad you uh raised that question because um you know, I was gonna point out about the need for the variance and because your staff report talks about the variance. See, the um setback is based upon the um current zoning, which is multiple family. And that setback requirement is twenty feet from Capilani Street. So if you if you assume that the property is commercial, and then this is a commercial venture, then the setback is fifteen feet rather than twenty feet. So the department uh is is recommending and, you know, and we're accepting that the uh there'd be a future road widening setback of ten feet fronting Capilani Street. And so if the setback is taken from uh that ten feet of additional future ride widening and then you add twenty feet, so now your setback becomes thirty feet. And it kind of like renders the property somewhat unusable. So we kind of like had a lot of discussions with the planning department to say like, well, how about just consider like twenty five feet, ten feet for the future road widening and fifteen feet as who would be normally for a commercial area um setback, so it would be a total of twenty five feet. And then the project becomes much, much more feasible. And so with that, the director kind of understood the situation and said, well, you realize that you need to apply for a variance and but if you do apply for a variance, then know that you know, I would be generally supportive of a variance given the situation. So that's acknowledged in the staff's background report. And you know, with that understanding, you know, everything is was acceptable to the applicant.
So looking at the map on the existing property, it appears that that continued setback goes all the way across. Is that correct?
Yeah, the
The variance is consistent, I mean, uh, I'm sorry, the setback is consistent with the rest of the existing property.
Yeah, for for the primary um in the already developed property, which is the larger one.
Right.
You know, eh, there's no setback issue because the building is recessed and you have a lot of room. This one here is a small parcel, less than about seven thousand square feet. So the yellow line kind of reflects where the um ten additional feet. You know, future road widening. So from that point, then you're gonna have fifteen more feet.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the structure can be reasonably constructed.
So your entrance will change from the new property to use the existing building property?
Correct, yeah. So it'll be, it'll be considered like one, one, one project.
Okay.
Yeah, so no change in access condition.
So that's why you need the con- they're requesting a consolidation then?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarification. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, thank you, Commissioner. Um, that setback, does it just stop at that property? Or is that ten-foot setback go all the way up Capilani?
Um, the original, in relative to the original plan, uh, you know, what's already constructed. The condition reflected a ten-foot future road widening setback along Capilani Street. So uh if you see, if you can faintly see uh the improvements ever made, like the gate, you have a gate over there. That gate is at the ten-foot set additional setback line. Yeah.
Okay, so it would go all the way up the street?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, yes, Vice Chair.
And this may be more for staff. Just out of curiosity, um with this particular project, are we doing things in the correct order? Being that there needs to be an application for change in variance? So I think that's a staff question.
Oh, normally, well, you know, this is the use permit.
Uh huh.
So it's, the use permit is designed to allow the use, you know, the special use within this uh residential, multiple residential district. And then if it's approved, then to construct the building as they want, they would need to have a variance.
Okay.
If the variance were denied, uh, then effectively it renders the property unusable. And so they probably would not exercise the use permit.
Got you. Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions, Commissioners? Okay, seeing done, uh, public testimony on this matter?
No, Chair, there's none in person.
Okay, and online, anybody?
Chair, there are no testifiers.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, at this point in time, I'm gonna ask uh for motion for action.
Chair, I move that the applicant's request to amend use permit number fifteen dash zero 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 five four. Ac- application PL dash USC dash twenty twenty five dash zero 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 three nine to expand the permit area to establish and operate a wellness center facility and related improvements be approved. Based on the planning director's recommendations and and conditions, uh, which shall be adopted. Um, also adding to the motion, recommendations of condition three, condition five, and condition ten as submitted by the applicant this morning at eleven six twenty five today. Um, shall be adopted.
I'll second.
Okay. So. Okay, so it was moved by Commissioner De Luz and seconded by Comish- uh by Vice Chair Perrin. Uh, any discussions? Okay, if not, uh, staff, can we have roll call, please?
Um, Commissioner De Luz.
Aye.
And Vice Chair Perrin.
Aye.
Commissioner Baylog.
Aye.
And Chair Daniele.
Aye.
All right, motion carries with four ayes and one excuse and absent.
Great, thank, thank you. Um, you will be notified. You'll be notified of the commission's uh decision in writing. So thank you and uh I think that's a great uh, a great added um value to the community, so. I like the building also. Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right on to agenda item number two. Okay, uh applicant Vincent Ludricks, PL dash SPP dash twenty twenty five ninety seven. Revised application for special permit to allow the storage of two work vehicles for plumbing business within the garage on approximately point five acres. Four, eight-five acres portion of a larger one-acre proper, uh, one-acre parcel in the state land use agricultural district. The subject property is located at fifteen dash fourteen seventy one, Ninth Avenue, Hawaiian Paradise Park, Puna, Hawaii, TMK three, one dash five dash fifty two. Parcel one forty six. Uh, staff, can we have presentation, please?
Good morning, Chair and members of the Winter Planning Commission. Before you today, we have the Vincent Ludrick Special Permit Application, PL dash SPP twenty twenty five ninety seven. The subject property is located within the Puna District of Hawaii Island, specifically within the Hawaiian Paradise Park. As you can see on your screen, the subject parcel is approximately shown with the red star. The applicant's request, so the applicant is requesting a revised application for the special permit to allow for the storage of just two work vehicles for a plumbing business within point five acres of a one-acre parcel located within the agricultural district. In addition, it consists of the following, um, so the detached garage, which is a twenty-four hundred square foot garage, which would include the storage of two vehicles for the plumbing business, which is currently constructed under valid building permits with the dwelling that's also located for the applicant's mother. There will be access and parking. Access is via the Ninth Avenue, which is a private gravel roadway. And the two parking stalls will be located within the detached garage. This is a correction to the recommendation and background report that you have before you, which also states that there will be two parking stalls located outside of the garage. However, the applicant has only intended to have just the two parking stalls within the garage. Currently, there are four full-time employees that will be using this garage to park their work vehicles. And the hours of operation will be Monday through Friday from seven AM to five PM with no weekends. And also limited to just four business vehicle trips per day. This is the county zoning map for the subject parcel, which you can see is highlighted in red. The county zoning for the subject parcel is um agricultural with a minimum lot size of one acre. It's also consists of the surrounding properties, which are also agriculture with a minimum lot size of one acre. The state land use designation for the subject property, which again is um outlined in red, is also agricultural as well as the surrounding property, which is shown in the green on your screen. The general plan designation for the subject parcel, um, as you can see, this is highlighted in a yellow, is also highlighted in a in a gold color, which is designated as the rural for the land use um pattern allocation guide. On your screen, you have the Puna CDP, which does show the regional community um park centers that are highlighted in the bright green. There are approximately three of them within the Hawaiian Paradise Park, and the subject property is currently located in between the bottom two um, to the right of your screen, and the subject property is highlighted in red, as you can see on your screen. This is the sub- applicant site plan, which shows the zero point five acre special permit request. Um, it does include the driveway, which would be used by the applicant and his employees to use to access the back garage, because the garage is located in the back portion of the par- property. And this is just the garage floor plan of the detached garage, which shows that it is an open um area garage with just a bathroom that's associated with it. And these are the elevations of the subject garage. This was the most recent aerial photo photograph that I could get of the property. However, there is um current construction, so it has been cleared and leveled. However, the subject property is shown on your screen, um, highlighted in red. And it does show that the aerial photography that I could get closest to the subject property does have trees on it, unfortunately. These are the most recent site photos, though. So first photo on your left is the photo of the subject parcel from Ninth Avenue facing in the northwest direction, which does show that Ninth Avenue is a gravel roadway. Um, and then the photo on your right currently shows the subject property, which does include the dwelling in the front of the property as well as the garage, which is located in the back. And this is facing in the northeast direction. This is a photo of the subject parcel special permit area facing northeast, which does show the current um subject garage, which will be used to park the two work vehicles in. At this time, the planning director is recommending an approval of the special permit request. And I can, that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Will the applicant or their, and or the representatives please come forward? Okay, uh, before we get started, I'm gonna swear you uh both in. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the Winter Planning Commission?
I do.
Great. Uh, please speak directly and clearly into your microphone, a microphone and state your name and the town you reside in and whom you represent.
I'm John Pippen, uh, here representing Vincent Ludricks. To my right, I live in Honocaha. Uh, Vincent lives in HPP, just a few lots down from the subject property.
Thank you. Have you received the background recommendation reports from the planning department?
Yes, we have.
And do you agree with the recommendations, including the proposed conditions?
Yes, we do.
Okay, is there anything else you'd like to tell the commission about your application?
Certainly, certainly. Um, good morning, Chair Daniele. Uh, Winter Planning Commissioners, good to see you all again. Thank you again for your work in reviewing these applications before you. Uh, a vital community service you provide. Thanks also to planning department staff uh for assisting with the review of this application. Um, good plumbers are hard to find, yeah? This is a good one. Look no further. Uh, he answers the phone, he shows up, he does good work. Uh, this is a vital community service. Um, and as many small business owners know, you've got to be adaptable. You got to be thinking outside the box and kind of hustling to make your small business work. Uh, increasing costs, it's hard to find good help. Uh, the challenges are are many. So this is a very simple request. Um Vincent bought this property and built this garage first when uh his mother was displaced from Leilani Estates. It was used to store her household goods. And now that she has a home on the subject property, there's space available to store work vehicles. So his workers will come, take the vehicles out, put their vehicles in the garage and go to the work sites picking up materials for the day on the way. Um, earlier in the application process, we had accidentally expanded or extrapolated on the uses to uh include storage of materials, but really that's not proposed. Uh, it's simply storage of the work vehicles. So if you have any questions, um, we're happy to address those. Appreciate your review and support. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, you have any uh questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing done, um. Uh, can I have a motion?
I move that a revised application for a special use permit, PL dash SPP dash two zero two five dash zero 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 nine seven to permit the storage of two work vehicles within a garage on a portion of a parcel in the salt, I'm sorry, in the state land use agricultural district be approved based on the planning director's recommendation and conditions, which shall be adopted.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, it was moved by Vice Chair Perrin and seconded by Commissioner Baylog. Any discussions, any more discussions? Okay, seeing done, staff, can you uh please do a roll call?
Thank you, Chair. Vice Chair Perrin?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylog?
Aye.
Commissioner De Luz?
Aye.
And Chair Daniele? The motion carries four to zero with Commissioner Fukushima, excuse and absent. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Uh, you'll be notified of the commission's decision in writing. Thank you. You're very welcome. Okay, moving right along to um number, agenda item number three. Okay, applicant, uh, My- Mylani Development LLC, PL dash REZ dash twenty five eighty nine. Application for change of zone from agricultural three acres, A three A zoning district to a single-family resident, ten thousand square foot RS dash ten zoning district for four thousand four hundred and sixty-nine uh acres of land. The subject property is located at ten seventy-seven Ai Street, approximately one hundred and seventeen feet east of the intersection with Le- Lehuah Street, uh, Waikia Homesteads, Hilo, South Hilo, Hawaii, TMK three, two dash four dash eighty, parcel fourteen. Okay, uh, we have presentation by staff. Go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you Chair Daniele and members of the One Word Planning Commission. Uh, good morning, good to see your faces. Uh, as the chair stated, this is an application for a change of zone. The subject property indicated by the red star here is located in the South Hilo District of Hawaii Island, more specifically in the Waikia Homesteads area. The applicant is requesting a change of zone from an agricultural three acre zoning district to a single-family residential ten thousand square feet zoning district for four point four six six nine acres of land. The applicant proposes the development of a fourteen lot, single-family residential subdivision with lots ranging in size from a minimum of ten thousand square feet to just over twenty one thousand four hundred square feet and one road lot built to county dedicable standards with curb gutter and sidewalks. One of the proposed lots will accommodate an existing single-family dwelling currently situated on the property. Uh, and the remainder of the proposed lots will be sold as, uh, in graded form, ready for new landowners to build a home. The applicant intends to commence the subdivision and development process immediately after securing county rezoning approval. Subdivision approval is anticipated, anticipated within seven years from the effective date of the zoning change, the cost of the improvements is estimated to be one point five million dollars. Here's the county zoning map, again, for reference, we've got the, uh, subject parcel here outlined in red. Uh, for reference, uh, we've got Kikaha Street, uh, right above to the north, uh, Lelehua Street to the west here, and Mylani Street to the east. Uh, and this is situated within, uh, or adjacent to the Kikaha Heights subdivision here to the north and the High High Estate subdivision here to the west. Uh, the zoning of the subject property is agricultural three acres, uh, as indicated by, by the blue color, and other zoning in the area is, uh, agricultural one acre indicated by green and, uh, some single-family residential zoning, both fifteen thousand square feet and ten thousand square feet. So the proposed, uh, rezoning would be consistent with the surrounding, uh, nature of the area. The state land use boundary designation for the subject property and surrounding area is urban, and the general plan land use pattern allocation guide map designates the subject property and surrounding area as low-density urban. Here is a, uh, the applicant's, uh, proposed subdivision plan, uh, again, for, uh, reference. You've got Kikaha Street with, oh, sorry, let me go back, which currently, uh, ends here to the north of the subject property, but the applicant is proposing to extend that, uh, through this lo- road lot here, fifty-foot wide road lot, that again will be improved to county dedicable standards, uh, full, uh, pavement with concrete curb gutter sidewalk to match the existing Kikaha Street. Um, and, uh, currently, the single-family dwelling on the property is located here in the, uh, southwest corner of the property and currently takes access from the end of Ahie Street via an access easement. Uh, once the subdivision is complete and the roadway is built, this property will, uh, take access off of, uh, the extension of Kikaha Street and, um, will terminate, uh, the roadway access easement, uh, off of Ahie Street. Here are some aerial photographs of the subject property, uh, and surrounding area. On the left-hand side, again, you see some of the existing residential subdivisions surrounding the property. Uh, this is a county park that was part of the subdivision to the north. Uh, to the, uh, right of the subject property, you'll see a, uh, rezoning that was approved in, uh, twenty twenty one and, uh, has been subdivided. Uh, you'll see the extension at that point of Mylani Street, which again is, uh, to county dedicable standard. So the extension of, uh, Kikaha Street will be similar, um, and, uh, both will, uh, dead end here at Ahie Street. Uh, there was a rezoning, uh, back, uh, earlier this year that was approved to the south, uh, that requires, um, not connectivity through, uh, Ahie Street, but allows for a private roadway, although the road lot is delineated on subdivision plans and will be dedicated to the county upon our request. So there, uh, will be future connectivity, um, if the county accepts that and builds the road. Uh, here on the right-hand side, again, you'll see, um, a more zoomed-in version of the property. Again, uh, Kikaha Street here is dead-ending, but will continue through. Uh, here on the bottom left is the existing, uh, dwelling on the property. The rest of the property is currently, uh, vacant of improvements. Here are some photographs of the subject property. On the upper left here is a view of the property looking, uh, north, um, from the end of Ahie Street. Here's the existing single-family dwelling on the property. Uh, on the right-hand side here is a view of the property from the end of Kikaha Street, looking south into the property, you can see again, uh, vacant of any improvements or structures. Um, on the bottom left is a view of Kikaha Street, uh, facing, facing south into the property. I just wanted to show kind of the existing, uh, and both of these bottom images show the existing roadway, uh, curb gutter sidewalk. And again, this will extend into, uh, the subject property to match the existing Kikaha Street, uh, profile. Uh, the planning director is recommending that the planning commission forward a favorable recommendation uh, to the county council with stated conditions. Uh, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the commission may have.
Staff, do we have, staff, commissioners, do we have any, um, questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, thank you. Will the applicant and or the representatives please come forward? Okay, I already swore Sydney, and so I swear you in. Uh, please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth on this matter now before the One Word Planning Commission?
I do.
Thank you. Uh, please speak directly and clearly into your microphone and state your name and the town you reside in, in whom you represent.
It's Craig Lindner. I represent Mylani Development, and I live in Heelohoi.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Uh, good morning, and, um, this is chair members of the commission. Um, for the record, my name is Sidney Fouke, planning consultant. Um, I'd like to also acknowledge, uh, the presence of Darren Arai. He's actually the author and, uh, of the application, and we kind of like tag team on this one. We chunked him forward, and he said, okay, you take the commission, and I'll take the council, so this is where I am. This is, this is kind of like an application, as the staff, uh, report kind of pointed out, uh, kind of checks all of the boxes, regulatory-wise, infrastructure contributions to the community, um, affordable housing, you know, so on and so forth. Um, so having said that, there were like two public comments that I'd like to just briefly address. One related to, um, person, you know, neighbor saying that, oh, you know, there was some drainage issue. Um, on that particular matter, uh, what happened was that the, the applicant owner did some topical grading to address some of the, the, the big issue, and actually to see what's happening on the ground. And so during the process, there was some inadvertent, um, uh, you know, like diversion of some of the water that, that went into the neighbor's property, and so there was a concern. We had since communicated with that, uh, property owner to indicate that, you know, um, when the project is developed, they have to comply with the county's grading ordinance, and, you know, the subdivision code will require that anything and all drainage, um, generated by the property will be contained on property. And so, um, you know, he was satisfied with that response, but nevertheless, he did raise that issue, and so I wanted to, uh, point that out. The other, um, comment came from, uh, also a neighbor saying that, I, I support the project, but, you know, can you guys make sure that when they do the, um, the grading work, that the fugitive dust issue is addressed? And so we kind of like told her, yes, you know, it'll be addressed, because the State Department of Eldora requires the fugitive dust as well as noise be, um, be controlled. So having said that, if there's any other questions relating to the application, we're, we'll answer.
Okay, um, commissioners? Okay, um, and, okay, so, uh, do you agree with the recommendations, including the proposed conditions? Yes?
Yes, so we reviewed the staff's report, the proposed conditions, they're acceptable.
Yep.
Okay. Uh, commissioners, any, uh, any, uh, questions for staff or the applicant?
I have a question.
Yes, Vice Chair.
These, this is going to be fourteen lot, single-family residential subdivisions. Um, for who do you plan these homes before?
Yeah, uh, these are going to be all like market homes, you know, like to the community. Um, it was kind of like pointed out to me earlier by Mr. Arai that, you know, within this particular area, you know, since twenty nineteen, there've been like, maybe about like eighty to one hundred lots created, and pretty much according to the person who developed and or selling, sold those lots, noted that about ninety percent were all like Hilo residents, so that's the, the market that he's looking at right now.
Single-family homes, are any of these going to be for low-income characters at all?
There is going to be an affordable housing requirement, you know, because that's part of chapter eleven, and you have a condition that already requires that to be addressed. And so, um, he's, the owner hasn't really like taken it to that level of saying that, you know, this is what I'm going to do, but he has to, uh, he's going to be obligated based on four, uh, thirteen lots to, uh, provide twenty percent, about two point six, so ref- roughly like two and a half of affordable housing units, or credit would have to be addressed by this project, whether it's going to be off-site or onsite, uh, that still hasn't been determined yet. He still needs to do, do the, uh, specific financial math to figure out like how best to address it. But one way or the other, at least like two and a half affordable housing credits will be required of the project.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, do I have, uh, do I have a motion for action?
I'm going to say, this is the problem I'm having just right now, um. I want to see more low-income housing available. I want to see the plan for it in here. I want it to be included, especially at a time like this where we need housing. We need housing available at all levels, low-income, middle, the middle class that's just, you know, fairly gone. So you said two and a half credits that they have to im- imply on this development? So does that mean what? The other twelve units will be?
They're going to be like-
Above?
Um, they're going to be like, um, uh, a minimum of two and a half credits, housing credits needs to be generated by the product, by the project, and based on the housing code, the housing, affordable housing code, it, it can be addressed onsite or offsite. And so that, as I mentioned earlier, you know, hasn't been specifically determined by the applicant yet, but before they can get final subdivision approval, uh, that agreement would have to be executed with the Office of Housing.
When you say offsite, how does that benefit the low-income?
See, it's all, it's, that's really a good point, because I think that, um, and maybe I would kind of like suggest that Councilmember, uh, Kirkovic, um, is coordinating, has been coordinating a meeting with the Office of Housing and the community to determine like what kind of amendments to the Affordable Housing Code, chapter eleven, you know, should be made. Currently, the affordable housing requirement is like twenty percent of whatever project, uh, product you produce. So if during the, you know, the intention is, the intent behind, um, council, uh, person, uh, Kirkovic and the Office of Housing is to see what kind of amendments, you know, would be, uh, should be considered. Uh, and then, you know, whether it's going to be increasing the number, deleting requirements to have offsite requirements, you know, those kind of stuff still needs to be worked out. Um, I think that, you know, if, if that is the concern, I think it would be very productive, you know, for members of the commission or individuals to participate in that workshop. I think that workshop is scheduled for November nineteenth or so. Um, but I can, you know, be more than happy to provide you with that information. But over and beyond that, what the applicant is, uh, prepared to do is to fulfill the obligations of the existing code. So if there is some, you know, heartburn over like what the existing code si- si- is, uh, staged, then I think that that's, uh, where the focus should be, you know, how do you amend the code?
I understand and I agree. I'm just wondering just how is that going to affect the dynamics of Hilo? We're already, we're face, we're facing a housing crisis, so I need to ask the question so it's there for record.
Yes, I understand.
You know, so everyone's kind of transparent and hopefully on the same page. Okay, but thank you so much for that.
Sure.
Uh, thank you, Vice Chair. Um, when you say housing credit, but the credit is a unit, a dwelling? Is it monetary? What, uh, could you define that, please?
It's based on my understanding of the chapter eleven, the housing code, it's, it's like, um, you have to provide like twenty percent of the number of units that, that the project generates. So if, if this, in this situation, yeah, the first unit is already, the existing property is example. So you have like thirteen new units coming online, so thirteen times twenty percent is like two point six. So, and they generally round up, so it's either going to be two and a half or three affordable housing credits. And it can be, the credits would be, uh, it's kind of like a sliding scale. So if you provide, for example, you know, if, if you provide like hundred percent of median income, then you generate one credit. If you address a affordable housing that's maybe eighty percent or less, then that's like one and a half credit. I mean, uh, they're one and a half credits. If you provide it, I think maybe like fifty percent, then you generate two credits. So if your target is more at the lower end, then you, you generate more credits. But at the end of the day, you have to be able to prove to the housing agency that you generated two and a half credits, and that's going to be all spelled out in an agreement that's, needs to be executed between the developer and the Office of Housing. So like, you know, this, there was a situation I worked on in, uh, in Kaloka Maoka. Um, it's a six lot, uh, subdivision, and so six lot would be the obligation would be, I think, um, he had obligation for one unit. And so what it worked out was that, you know, the owner sold that one lot to, um, a person that was qualified for like about eighty percent of median income, and the, the eighty percent of median income, the, the county would have to certify that that person, you know, is, is eligible.
Sorry, how much do you anticipate to sell these, one unit of, one of these fourteen lots at?
I really don't know. I, well, if it's going to be market, it's going to be whatever is prevailing, yeah. So I, I don't know what the, the market, you have an idea what the market is? Yeah, so if you, it's kind of hard to determine what the market price is today, you know, because it may take about a year and a half or two years to actually have those lots on the market, and subdivision code requires that you cannot sell or market any of those lots until you get final approval.
Correct.
And so if it's like two years down the road, then whatever that market value is at that time.
So the market value two years from now will definitely increase just because of, just because of the demand and the location and the new build. So it may just be above low-income means, and twenty percent of fourteen is two point eight, so run it up to three would have to be done at, um, I'm sorry.
So if, if it are, if the, for example, hypothetically, if the obligation is three, then, um, you can conceivably have like three lots sold on a property at a hundred percent of median.
Yes.
That's how you'd be addressed, yep.
That's how it's done. Thank you.
And if you sell it like at maybe eighty percent, then it's like one and a half credit, so you need to sell two of those lots at eighty percent, yep.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions, the staff or the applicant? Okay, I'll call, uh, motion for action.
Chair, I moved that a favorable recommendation before to the county council for change of zone application, PL dash REZ dash two zero two five dash zero 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 eight nine, based on the planning director's recommendation and conditions, which shall be adopted.
I'll go ahead and second that.
Okay. Okay, it was moved by Commissioner De Luz and seconded by Vice Chair Parent. Any more discussion or comments? Okay, uh, staff, can I have roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to send a favorable recommendation, Commissioner De Luz.
Aye.
Vice Chair Perrin.
Aye.
Commissioner Belo.
Aye.
And Chair Daniele.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Motion carries with four aye votes and one excused.
Great. You are the commissioner will, uh, forward its recommendation, County Council, in writing and, uh, thank you. Okay, moving right along, uh, item four has been deferred. And do we know what date that has been deferred to?
No, Chair, the applicant is amending their application, so it will be scheduled sometime in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna call for a fifteen minute recess. Thank you. We'll, we'll be, uh, meet back here at ten, ten fifteen. Thank you.
You should flip the D just one.
Jia. Who's that name? Jia Singi.
Jia. Jia Singi.
Okay, let's just go here. Okay, we're back. We have agenda item number five. Jia Singi versus When We're Planning Commission three C C V dash twenty five twenty one. The commission anticipates convening in an executive session pursuant to Hawaii revised statutes H R S nine two dash five A four to consult with its attorney regarding C three C C V twenty five twenty one. Agency docket number, special management area permit application number P L S dash S M A dash twenty twenty four sixty. Discussion will focus on legal issues relating to the commissioner, the commission, commissions, power, duty, privileges, immunities and potential liabilities as related to the proposed statement. I would like to have a motion for the commission to enter into executive session.
I move that the commission enter into executive session to consult with its attorney regarding questions and issues pertaining to the commission's powers, duties, privileges, immunities and liabilities pursuant to Hawaii revised statute ninety two dash five.
Okay, second.
Second.
Okay, it's moved by Vice Chair Peron and seconded by Commissioner Baylog. Yeah, all in favor, say aye. We do?
Yes, that's my staff.
Okay. Okay, staff, do we have a roll call? I don't think so. Just say aye. It's all in favor, say aye.
I know, but we need a roll call vote to go into executive session. Yes, we could.
I will improvise here. That was, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that was Vice Chair Peron and seconded by Commissioner Baylog.
Okay. So for the vote to go into executive session, Vice Chair Peron?
Aye.
Commissioner Baylog?
Aye.
Commissioner Delus?
Aye.
And Chair Daniele?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries for, and with one excused.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we are now going to enter executive session. Thank you.
Jessica, we're back.
Okay, we have come back from executive session. We were in executive session to discuss a proposal for settlement, okay?
I move that the stipulated agreement proposed by Plin's council be denied based on the planning department's rule four dash thirty one and Hawaii revised statutes HRS as amended two zero five A dash twenty nine.
Second.
Second.
Okay. So the uh. Okay, so staff, we just need a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Perrin.
Aye.
Commissioner Baylog.
Aye.
Commissioner DeLuce.
Aye.
And Chair Daniele.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Okay, I think that concludes today's agenda items. Staff, do we have any announcements for next meeting?
Yes, I have a few announcements. The first one is that next Thursday, November thirteenth, there will be a contested case hearing for the Tepe Mountain application. That was a special permit in, I believe, Papiko. And a hearings officer was hired, Sherry Broder Esquire. So she will be holding that hearing next Thursday. After that, she will make a recommendation to the commission. And then we will hold another public hearing where you can make a decision on the application. Another just reminder is that we were also having a special rulemaking meeting on December ninth, that's a Tuesday. And that will be a joint meeting with the Windward and Leeward Planning Commissions. So Windward commissioners will come here. Leeward will go to their West Hawaii chambers and we will zoom you together to connect. I believe that starts at nine thirty, yes. And you should be receiving the materials for that meeting very shortly. For your December fourth Windward regular meeting, you tentatively have five applications as well as election of officers for next year. And that's all I have. There was also on the agenda the SMA report if you have any questions on it.
Yes, so again, the SMA report was distributed via email. Commissioners, you have any questions on the SMA report for staff? Okay, we have no questions on that. And announcements were given. Commissioners, anything you want to add to the agenda?
I wanted to ask if there was any way we could maybe add on some training regarding housing development? Maybe a little more focused into low income housing, the requirements and kind of where it's going.
Yeah, if that's something that commission is interested in, I can coordinate some training either within the department or with Office of Housing and Community Development.
Yeah, yeah. I'll go for it. Yeah.
Have to do a motion.
We have to do a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I will speak with them and get back to you on when that can occur.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right. For the record, the Windward Planning Commission's next regular meeting is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, December fourth, twenty twenty five, here at the County Council Chambers in Hilo. And the public can also testify via Zoom. The date and venue of the meeting are subject to change. If there's no further business, can I have a motion for adjournment?
I motion to adjourn today's meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, so it was moved by Vice Chair Perrin and seconded by Commissioner Baylog to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye. Aye. This meeting is adjourned at and fifty AM. Thank you.
Those captions transcript will be terminated shortly and those who wish to save the transcript should do so now.